Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, February 20th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abu-Wasli?
Present.
Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time I have a moment of silence. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is a public forum, which is set aside for comments from members of the public on topics that are on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone is here to make comments associated with a public hearing, and I imagine there are people here to speak on the parking matter, that there is a public hearing, a public comment period at the time, that that item comes up on the agenda. So, the first session, the first public comment session is for items that are on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. And before we do that, I would like to review the rules of procedure for members of the public speaking at council meetings. Anyone wishing to address the council should complete a yellow card, which is at the end of the table, and hand it to the clerk before you come forward to speak. Please do not approach the dials where the council is sitting. If you have handouts or any materials to submit to the council, please hand those to the city clerk for distribution of the council. Please, once you're called forward, please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone, because these meetings are recorded. And you're encouraged to state your name and address, any group affiliation. All persons wishing to speak at the, in the public forum will have a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is eminently threatening to any person, or which incites violence, or which is obscene. Please do not disparage any individuals and keep the comments to the matter at issue. Please avoid repeating any comments or points that have been shared by people who have spoken previously. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting, or speech, or conduct which interferes with other people's ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone's cooperation in adhering to these guidelines. And so, at this time, we have the first public forum open for comments. If anyone's here to address council on any matter which is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, please come forward. Okay, seeing no ones coming forward, we'll close this part of the meeting, proceed to the consent agenda.
Yes, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E1, Resolutions 322-54 through 322-68.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E1, Resolutions 322-54 through 322-68. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu-Wasli's abstention as follows. Items B1 through C1, Resolutions 322-69 to 322-71.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items B1 through C1, Resolutions 322-69 through 322-71. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the mayor's abstention. Now I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-02, approving an amendment to Section 122-9A of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to writing on sidewalks. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first consideration of ordinance number 25-02, approving an amendment to Section 122-9A of the Code of Ordinances relating to writing on sidewalks. Any discussion?
I just want to reiterate, Chief, we would, we'll have a, as this comes into play, there will be an educational period and a grace period. And I think, Mike, you mentioned there'll be some signage that will go up earlier than to let people know that, where this section is and what we're doing, correct?
Correct. So, this ordinance change takes three readings to do. So, while we're in the process of doing those three readings, we'll come back with our plan of how we're not only going to put the vertical signs, but, and the painted signs similar to what's downtown Cedar Rapids.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, remind, this is still the first reading, so there's two more readings. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-02, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing regarding public safety training facility paving and foundation package. We'll take a presentation from the, from Mike, and then, then we'll take the public comments.
Yes, Your Honor. So, this is the project for paving, the actual concrete, and the foundation package for the burn building. This is located between the new facility and the old facility of Public Works, where the training center is going to be. There was five bids that were received, the low bid coming in from Central State's Concrete at 98.9% of the engineer's estimate, $454,975. Has a start date of 5/26/25, completion date of August 15th. Liquidated damage of $500 per day, and we are recommending proceeding with the plans and bids.
Okay. We'll save council comments or questions for you for the motion. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, please come forward. Okay. We'll ask the clerk if any comments were received outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
Mike, any meeting, any comments outside the meeting?
No.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, move to approve project calendar regarding the public safety training facility paving and foundation package as follows. This will be Resolutions 322-72 through 322-73.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the public safety training facility paving and foundation package, including Resolutions 322-72 and 322-73. Discussions or questions for Mike? Go ahead.
Mike, does, does this include the concrete work for the second training structure that has yet to be built? Or is this only for the first one?
This is part of the approach from the driveway that comes in from Public Works, from Third Avenue, Eco Industrial Drive, includes that and the pavement around the structures.
Okay, so it encompasses the second one that will be constructed later. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the project calendar for the public safety training facility paving and foundation package, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing on the 2025 storm sewer project. We have the presentation, Mike?
Yes, Your Honor. So, this is our annual program, where we go and we put drain tile or storm sewer in parts of the neighborhoods that don't have it. We try and target those areas that we have ice dams during the winter. So, those people that have sump pumps that don't have a place to take the sump pump. So, they're likely either illegally discharging in their sanitary sewer system, and then we're treating that at the Bertram Plant, or they're putting it at the curb and that's going out into the street. And then when we have cold weather, like we had earlier this week, then that's freezing. So, we're trying to address those issues so that it's not a continuous maintenance issue. So, we are recommending proceeding with the plans. We did have five bids on this one as well. It's, or I'm sorry, 10 bids on this one. It's a little odd in that the low bid became BWC Incorporated after we did the bid tab. So, unit prices prevail, and so they had a math error in theirs. So, after they figured out what their bid was going to be, they actually rescinded their bid. So, they were the original low bidder after we recalculated it. So, Valentine Construction is the next low bid at $187,346.25, which is 77%, 77.3% of the engineer's estimate. Has a start date in May, completion in 40 days, liquidated damage of $300 per day. And we are recommending proceeding with the plans and the contract.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's here to address council on this measure, please come forward. And we'll ask the city staff if any comments were received outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
We have not.
Okay. Please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing, proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding the 2025 storm sewer project. This will include resolution numbers 322-74 to 322-75.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2025 storm sewer project, including Resolutions 322-74 and 322-75. Any discussion or questions for Mike? Go ahead, Steve.
Question. Mike, are we getting caught up on the projects in this, in this type of scope in neighborhoods? Or how many more areas are out there that we still need to contemplate working on in the future?
So, we don't know the answer to that yet. We're in the process of getting it. That's why we have the Stormwater Master Plan that's under contract right now, so that we can figure out, similar to our sanitary sewer system, we know that's $83 million. We don't know what that dollar round is for storm sewer, so I can't give you that answer until that plan is done.
So, at this point, all we're doing is working on projects or areas that are known to us?
Correct. We're taking care of those nuisances that we know are issues.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Discussion? Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the 2025 storm sewer project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is D6, Public Comment Period regarding no parking zones within Area 3, including all cul-de-sacs and their connecting streets within the city. We'll go ahead and take the presentation, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
Yep. So, just a couple of pictures that are in the TAC memo. The left is Third Street, and then the other one is the fire engine backing back down Third Street. So, if you recall, this happened back on February 14th of 2021, and this is where this all kind of stemmed from. So, we have a portion of old parts of town before 2007 that have parking on both sides of the street. And so, after this was an incident, we decided that we would take areas at a time. That way, we can notify the public, get them signed, and then move to the next area. So, we take it a step at a time, instead of taking it all on at once. So, the first area, if you recall, was what we call the Alleghanies, or the area West 8th. That area that's back there between West 8th and Dry Creek. The second area was between 10th Street, 9th Avenue, and Indian Creek, in that pie shape. And then we also had the uptown policy that put together for those streets that are really narrow. So, when we get to that uptown, because there's areas of town that if we take all the parkingway pursuant to us, there would be, they would have to walk five blocks if they didn't have a driveway or a garage, which some of those residents in that area don't have that. So, the only access they have is on-street parking, and the streets are very narrow in that original part of Old Town. So, again, all roads after, we're only talking about roads before 2007. Again, this has to do with solid waste fleet with the curb collection, snowplows, our jet truck and camera van. That's both for our storm sewer and sanitary sewer, so that we can maintain our underground infrastructure, and it's also for emergency response. Based on, that's the fire truck. Our, our employees need to be able to maintain infrastructure, need to have access, and setting that standard of care and setting community standards. And I got the chief here to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So, just speaking to standard of care and community standards. It wasn't shortly after I started here in the fall of '22 where I met with Mike, and I learned about this incident. I wasn't here when that happened. But we talked about, you know, where are those opportunities to where we can reduce community risk in order to support reliable emergency services to our residents? And so, this is really taking an opportunity to, as a fairly newer member of Team Marion, to complement our team, that we are looking at ways to where, through infrastructure and community design, where we can make our community more safe and have crucial conversations on how we can do that together. And so, this is an outcome of, of one of those opportunities, is to have a community conversation surrounding this and trying to, through infrastructure design, ensure for reliable access for emergency incidents, whether it's a fire, an emergency medical call, rescue, or hazardous material incident, to where we can take a very consistent and standardized approach throughout the community in order to have those policy conversations. So, just wanted to take that opportunity to really complement all of Team Marion, to have this community conversation and have this opportunity, because not every community does this. And so, really wanted to tee that up. I know there's a lot of, a lot of folks here tonight to provide their input into this, and I just wanted to add some context to that.
And to that point, just for everyone's awareness, so TAC is not just me. TAC is the Fire Chief. We have police representatives. I'm not only the Public Works, but also the City Engineer Representative. We have City Manager's Office that's in there. Planning is represented, and even our city arborist is part of TAC when we make these recommendations to City Council. So, then, just kind of some pictures to give some context. So, the top left and bottom are examples of cul-de-sacs today, where there is no restrictions on parking. And you can see what the cars lined all the way around the cul-de-sac. The top right one, I actually took during the parking ban, and there you can see in a cul-de-sac, the mailbox cluster is right here. So, the curb and gutter is right here. So, we have two cars sticking out while we're out there trying to do residential streets. So, there's two cars double parked in that cul-de-sac. This is Chandler Court, and you can see, again, even other entities such as utility companies, if they need to get to that transformer station, it's a tight squeeze to get in there and get down there with all the cars on both sides of the road and around the bulb. Just, again, more examples. This is 28th Street Court. These are pictures from the garbage truck, but if our garbage truck can't make that corner to make it onto that cul-de-sac, a fire engine is not going to make it either. Dossel Court, this just shows an example of when garbage is out, trying to get our garbage truck in there and pick up those units when there's cars parked on both sides. And this is just an example of what that garbage truck looks like. Some questions that came up on the Tuesday work session was, what can some people do to add more parking? So, these are some exhibits, and I know it's hard to read at this scale. But behind the sidewalk, they can widen their driveway and add additional parking, should they choose to do that. I know there's some families out there with seven vehicles, and even with the on-street parking, they're running out of room. So, this is an option for some people, should they choose to do this. And then there's also the temporary relief that we have now as well of filling out a hole harmless. So, if they're going to have Christmas or a graduation party, they can fill that hole harmless out for a limited time period and then park in that no-parking area. There are a few cul-de-sacs that I just want to mention that are hard ones, that doesn't have an easy solution to it. So, this is Park Crest Court, and I think we heard from almost all the residents that live in this area. This is right across from the pool. So, the proposal is that the red line would become the no-parking. The green would be the only parking that would be available. And that's not a lot of space, because they can't park on 35th Street. Obviously, they could, we could work out something where they could park at the pool, but not when that's busy. But this is a difficult one, because they don't have that adjacent street. Most cul-de-sacs do have that adjacent street that they can park on. The other one that's tough is Timber Oak Court. Similar situation. Boyson Road has no parking on it. And so, the red would be the no-parking area. The green is the proposed parking area. And again, Newcastle is right off the page here. If we could get the sidewalk in, at least they could park on Newcastle and have a somewhat close place to park. But there is no parking on Boysons. That's what makes it hard on some of these shorter cul-de-sacs, where there's not another street next to it. There are a couple that I want to call out that we modified from the TAC memo. So, originally, there were 85 cul-de-sacs in the TAC memo that we were modifying. This is an old subdivision that we annexed in, and the width of the street actually makes it so that we don't need to restrict it after we dived into it a little bit longer. So, Heather Court originally was proposed to be no parking on one side and the cul-de-sac. We've since modified that to only be the cul-de-sac, because the street is wide enough. Same thing with Elshire. In the old section, it is wide. In the new section, it's already no parking, and no parking in the cul-de-sac, where it's narrow, just like all other streets after 2007. The other modification is Third Avenue Court. This is Rachi's office. So, we were originally proposing no parking on the north side. We found out the street was wide enough. So, again, no parking, just in the cul-de-sac bulb. So, high level, that's what's in the TAC memo. If there's any questions before the public comes up, otherwise, we can open it up to the public for comment. And then I know we have a few emails to share as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I think I'd like to begin by taking the comments that were received outside the meeting, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. So, we received 77 emails. 77 residents emailed in. They've all been forwarded to council in advance of the meeting with the email in its entirety. 15 of those wrote in support of the recommendation. Five were in support, as well as they opposed the location of where the restriction was. So, 57 were in opposition. So, I will go in street order, and we'll, each comment will have its own slide. So, for 17th Avenue, the resident at 1405 17th Avenue wrote in support. 26th Street Court, the resident at 110 26th Street Court wrote in opposition. The resident at 170 26th Street Court wrote in opposition. For 26th through 30th Street Courts, resident at 185 27th Street wrote in opposition. 28th Street Court, the resident at 125 28th Street Court wrote in support. 160 28th Street Court wrote in opposition. 29th Street Court, resident at 165 29th Street Court wrote in support. 35th Street Court, resident at 1401 35th Street Court wrote in opposition. Resident at 3501 35th Street Court wrote in opposition. 3544 35th Street Court wrote in opposition. Third Avenue Court, the business at 305 44th Street wrote in opposition. 43rd Street Court, resident at 4325 McGowan Boulevard wrote in opposition. 48th Street Court, 1940 48th Street Court wrote in opposition. 1970 48th Street Court wrote in opposition. Antler Court, 382 Antler Court wrote in opposition. Antrim Court, 1157 Antrim Court wrote in support and in opposition. Ashwood Court, 2350 Ashwood Court wrote in opposition. Barrington Court, 242 Barrington Court wrote in support. Bedford Court, 1135 Bedford Court wrote in opposition. Chandler Court, 4855 Chandler Court wrote in support. Charleston Court, 2225 Charleston Court wrote in support. 2255 Charleston Court wrote in support. 2275 Charleston Court wrote in opposition. Coventry Court, 2305 Coventry Court wrote in opposition. 2310 Coventry wrote in opposition. Creek Bend Circle, 900 Creek Bend Circle wrote in support. Creek Bend Court, 1025 Creek Bend Court wrote in opposition. Creek Bend Drive, 940 Creek Bend Drive wrote in opposition. Dry Creek Lane, 1060 Dry Creek Lane wrote in opposition. Edwin Court, 2190 Edwin Court wrote in opposition. Fox Hollow Court, 4030 Fox Hollow Court wrote in opposition. 4060 Fox Hollow Court wrote in opposition. Grand Avenue, 85 Grand Avenue wrote in support. Heather Court, 700 Heather Court wrote in support and opposition. Hunter's Ridge Court, 5540 Hunter's Ridge Court wrote in support and opposition. Irish Court, 470 Irish Court wrote in opposition. Ivy Court, 4150 4175 4200 4235 4240 Ivy Court, they wrote in opposition. Kings Court, 2350 Kings Court wrote in opposition. London Way, 3355 London Way wrote in opposition. Morel Court, 3550 Morel Court wrote in support and in opposition. Mulberry Court, 2654 Mulberry wrote in support. 2656 Mulberry wrote in support. 2658 Mulberry wrote in opposition. 2660 Mulberry wrote in opposition. Park Crest Court, 3405 Park Crest wrote in opposition. 3405 Park Crest wrote in opposition. 3410 wrote in opposition. 3435 wrote in support and in opposition. 3440 wrote in opposition. Pike Court, 2105 Pike Court wrote in opposition. Prairie Hill Court, 5625 Prairie Hill wrote in opposition. 5665 Prairie Hill wrote in opposition. Ridge Court, 255 Ridge Court wrote in opposition. Robert Court, 2125 Robert Court wrote in opposition. Rosewood Ridge Court, 2130 wrote in opposition. Royal Avenue, 3445 Royal wrote in opposition. 3485 Royal wrote in opposition. Silver Oak Court, 5040 wrote in opposition. 5070 wrote in opposition. South 15th Street, 1475 South 15th wrote in opposition. 1885 Pleasant View wrote in opposition, oh, no, wrote in support. South 19th Street Court, 155 South 19th wrote in support. 2250 South 19th Street wrote in support and in opposition. Timber Oak Court, 2000 Timber Oak wrote in opposition. 2010 wrote in opposition. 2050 wrote in opposition. 2055 wrote in opposition. 2070 wrote in opposition. West 14th Avenue, 1355 West 14th wrote in opposition. Westminster Place, 2540 wrote in opposition. 2580 wrote in, in support. Windsor Court, 2210 wrote in opposition. Twenty-two thirty wrote in opposition. Woodbine Drive, four fifty-five Woodbine Drive wrote in opposition. Four seventy wrote in opposition. And we had two write in. They did not provide an address. We had one in support and one in opposition.
Thank you. At this time, we will take the comments from people who are present here this evening. And I would just like to remind everyone of the rules procedure that we shared at the beginning of the meeting. And again, if we can ask people to keep the comments as concise as possible. I know there's probably a lot of people that, can we have a show of hands? How many people would like to address council this evening, just so we get an idea? Okay, great, you're all welcome to. And we'll just ask that you keep comments concise and maybe not repeat things that have already been said. But if there are things that are specific to your neighborhood or your case, certainly we want to hear that. And please remember that comments are limited to five minutes per person. And we're welcome to, please come forward at this time to address council. Who would like to be first? If you would hand the card to the clerk, please, and then, or one of the staff, there you go. Thank you. And then, please state your name and address and proceed. Thank you.
My name is Walter Abbott. Live at fourteen eighty Seventeenth Avenue. And I've been there for twenty-one years. Granted, it's a cul-de-sac. And granted, the post office boxes are on one side of the street, not the other. But on that stretch, there's seventeen families, or nineteen families, excuse me. And of those nineteen residences, only three people regularly park on the street. So I really don't see that it's a big problem. Now, myself, I make four because I park my pickup there once in a while, for a week, sometimes at a time. But I mean, I move it daily, but it's overnight, seven, maybe fourteen nights. And I also have a boat that the only place I have to work on it is in front of my house. And I live on the north side of Seventeenth Avenue. So that becomes a problem. You can't park in the driveway because you get ticketed if you block the sidewalk. I learned that the hard way. I moved the car one time to Lawless Street to be plowed in the snow, and I got ticketed for blocking the driveway, sidewalk. So, living there for twenty-one years, you kind of learn the area and the traffic issue. That street is very low traffic. And I'm not even at the cul-de-sac part. I'm just at between Fourteenth and Sixteenth. And you're lucky if there's a car an hour that goes through there. So, I really don't see that Seventeenth Avenue is an issue pertaining to what you guys are bringing up, except for maybe the problem, when the church is in session, there seems to be a lot of parking on both sides of the street. And sometimes it might get tight for an emergency or a public vehicle to get through. All right, but that's Saturday afternoon, Sunday morning, or holiday. So, in that, I'm in opposition against this. I think it should be probably looked at as on the most important ones, the biggest problem first, and work its way down. And then if this does go forward, I hope everybody has an opportunity to work on solutions for that problem because there is a couple. Thank you.
Thank you.
I tried not to be nervous about this. Anyways, my name is Tammy Evans. I live at thirty-four eighty Park Crest Court, the one that you took the pictures of with the cars and all that. I know for a fact that they didn't want to have their cars parked like that. They only had it because they were doing their driveway, and then they were going to put the cars back up. The mailboxes are never blocked. And our house would be the one that the green line is on. So why would we have to be the ones to have the cars parked right in front of our house? I understand that there could be a problem. We've lived there for fifteen-plus years. We have never had an issue with emergency cars, fire trucks, ambulances, snowplows, whatever, in our court. They've always been able to pull in, get to where they need to be, and pull out. I guess what we're trying to ask is why is there not any compromise given? Instead of just a flat-out no parking on the day that we have garbage pickup? We could have no parking on the cul-de-sac. When there's a snow emergency, yes, no parking. But like I said, they were clearing their driveway, and then they were pulling their cars back up. And we live right across from the Marion swimming pool. And I can't remember if you said that we could park there or could not park there. I was told we could not park there, which, that's sad because where else are we going to park? Thirty-fifth Street has no parking. There's, the closest streets we could park are a ways away for family members to come and walk to our house that are older in age. You know, so it's just, I don't know, I just don't think it's very fair of the city to expect that of people without at least looking at some compromises or having, you know, I don't know. Or to say, well, add another addition on to your house for parking. Well, who's going to come up with the money for that? We've already had to do that because we've gotten ticketed because we had our trailer parked on our grass. It's our grass! You know, so I, I hope that you guys can be willing to be open to some compromise and not just flat-out be, nope, no parking, no parking, no parking. Because it isn't fair. Not when we have elderly parents or visitors or whatever that have to park clear down a block or two away and then walk up to our house when it's cold or raining or whatever. I don't know, there just has to be a better solution than that. And like I said, we've been there for fifteen-plus years. We've never had an issue with the garbage truck pulling in, an ambulance pulling in, a fire truck pulling in. The mailbox has never been blocked. Yeah, it's just, I don't know, it's just very frustrating. So again, yes, I hope that something can be done. And if you're worried about emergency vehicles and garbage trucks and all this and that getting through streets, then why not ban every single street in Marion with no parking? If you're that concerned about having them be able to get through? I mean, that would, you know, then what's everybody going to do? So, I don't know. I've said my piece. I hope that you guys are open to it. I hope that you can do some compromise, and we won't just be all suffering with no parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Edwards. I'm at thirty-five hundred Thirty-Fifth Street Court, Marion. And I want to say, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. I've lived in the same house since nineteen seventy-eight. And sometime prior to nineteen ninety-three, this same issue came up. And we were aware of it because the city was driving to no parking sign in our cul-de-sac. That's how we knew that there was going to be no parking. So thanks to you for being upfront and giving us a chance to talk about this. We appeared at that meeting, and the decision was taken back. And we're left with parking in the cul-de-sac. Mainly because it's a short, short street. And tonight, I became aware of how many short cul-de-sacs there are in Marion. That's amazing. But we have, as proposed, ninety-four feet of parking space. We have to take out one driveway for that. So it'd be about eighty-five feet of parking for seven families in the circle. So we would ask that the exception be made and understand that we've moved into a new era of big equipment and all that. But we've not had a problem with any garbage trucks or anything coming down our little turnaround. So just appreciate the opportunity to go on record. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey there, I gave you my slip earlier. My name is Eric McGane. I'm on London Way. I'm representing the five other families on London Way, although it's informal, I don't have anything writing. But I've spoken with them, and we all came to the same general consensus that this is not going to work well for the current setup that we have. I'll give you a few notes here, a few takeaways that haven't been said yet. First of all, I don't want my neighbors paving their yards. That is something that's, to park more vehicles, to pack more vehicles in their yards, I don't think that's going to increase the curb appeal of anyone's home in this town. So that doesn't seem like a very practical solution. Second of all, our homes already have super limited access. We have three spots, three parking spots. The five neighbors take turns using those parking spots. They're not always in use, but we need those five spots. If we don't have those five spots, our adjacent street is a little ways away. We end up piling vehicles on an adjacent street into what becomes a crime of opportunity when you have five vehicles, three to five vehicles parked away out of the side of your home, when we already have kids and other perpetrators rifling, pulling on door handles, rifling through cars once a year. You can look at that, we call the cops, we prepare a police report. Things get stolen, things get recovered, that happens. And it's only going to get worse if we take our vehicles and we park them away from our homes. If I would have known that this could potentially have been an option, I would not have purchased my home in my area. It is going to decrease the value of my home by reducing the amount of people who'd want to live there. Particularly, my, this instance is very specific to me at thirty-three fifty-five London Way. I have a relatively steep driveway. If I park a vehicle, any vehicle in that driveway, when it, on our one or two icy days a year, that vehicle slides down the driveway and ends up in the cul-de-sac. It will kill people. If you force me to park either a small little Mazda or a large F-150 in my driveway, and I'm not saying it's already icy and then I park it, it will ice around the vehicle and slide down. And in the morning, the vehicle is in the middle of the cul-de-sac. I don't want to be responsible for killing somebody because of this no parking example, this no parking situation. So please consider alternatives to forcing me to park in my driveway when it could be really dangerous to do so. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Mayor and members of council, my name is Jason Rogers, and I live at twenty-two seventy-five Charleston Court. I think this is an attempt to do a one-size-fits-all solution. I can't speak to every cul-de-sac, what the size is, what the issues are. I'm speaking with mine in particular. And I've spoken to my neighbors, and we're in agreement that this would not be good. While other houses on the streets, the entrances to cul-de-sacs, I understand that's limited access. Having cars parked on both sides of the street is problematic and a safety issue. So we're in favor of the entrance to Charleston Court, having parking on only one side. But everything that's been discussed has been hypotheticals or anecdotal. So I'd like to talk about a little bit of math. Charleston Court, the cul-de-sac, is ninety feet across. If you figure that up, if you actually do math and figure out what the square footage of that is, it's over eighteen times the size of our largest ladder truck owned by Marion. So even if you weren't splitting these up, trying to fit in an actual square foot, if you just drove them in there, you could put ten of the ladder trucks, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's forty-four feet long and about eight feet wide.
A little longer than that.
Okay, according to Google, when I look up that make and model, that's what it shows me. It's between forty-three and forty-four feet long, depending on equipment that's added on the outside. You could put ten of those, parking them side by side and end to end in the center, ten of those in that cul-de-sac. Now, if you really wanted to, you could take eight feet all the way around the cul-de-sac and park as many emergency vehicles will fit, end to end to end. You can still put nine of those ladder trucks inside of the cul-de-sac, while those are all there, blocking driveways and everything else. And the other issue I have is, if you want to try and have your lawn serviced, if you want to try and have trees trimmed, if you want to try and have work done to your home, you have to put in for an application, and you have to request that. And then you have to take on specific liability in case something happens. However, that's not very consistent. Because where I live, years where we have consistent snowfall every few weeks, the city just piles the snow on my easement, to where we'll have a pile of snow ten feet tall on every part of the easement between driveways, where there's absolutely no access for an emergency vehicle. And now we don't have any parking on the street, which means more people are going to be parking in the driveways. More people are going to be parking, blocking sidewalks. And now you will have no access for emergency crews. Because in the wintertime, if you have a lot of snow, there's absolutely no access to my property. So what kind of liability is the city going to take on for that? Are they going to say, well, if we have snow piled up in your cul-de-sac, blocking access, we're going to take on to that, and we're going to deal with your insurance company? What about the property values? Same kind of thing. People are going to start putting more concrete in. That's not going to make it look very nice. It's going to make it harder for us to sell our home. So these are all concerns that we have. If I, I mean, I had a birthday this week. If my family wanted to come see me, there's nobody in my cul-de-sac that doesn't have somebody who's between sixty and ninety years old that lives there. They would have to park down around a corner or down the street and walk several blocks to come in. There's one section where you could possibly park some cars if this is done, but maybe two or three cars. And who's to say that anybody else in the neighborhood or on that Twenty-second Street or further down Charleston Court isn't going to have that? So do we want elderly people having to walk in zero-degree weather in the middle of February to go several blocks just to come and visit? I think there's a lot of issues with this. So again, I believe this is a one-size-fits-all attempt. It's something that needs to be looked at individually for each location. And I think it's more-
You have one minute remaining.
I think it's more a question of enforcement. So the picture of the vehicles that were parked out in the cul-de-sac, and the lady who spoke and said they were clearing their driveway, that's an enforcement issue. If somebody is parked how they shouldn't be, if they're double parked in the cul-de-sac, if they're parked in the middle of the cul-de-sac, those kind of things, then that should be enforced. We should have, we have methods in place already to address those issues. So this is a solution that's looking for a problem. And I think this is, I'm completely against banning the parking cul-de-sacs, but I think it's good that we're looking at banning parking on one side of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Turned in my card already. My name's Gordon Kennedy. I live at two eighty South Twenty-first Street Court. We live on a cul-de-sac that where most of the homes are newer, so I'm quite sure it's up to cold. It's not one of the more narrow ones that would be in an older part of Marion. I love living on a cul-de-sac. It's our little, our little cove. It's off the main drag, love that. I park in front of my house. I love to be able to park in front of my house. We do have three cars, and we don't like to jockey around who's going to be the first one out in the morning. So I park on the street so that I don't have to move the car or one of us backs into the other one trying to get out because we forgot the other one was there, and all of that type of thing. I've heard it several times, and I know we're not supposed to repeat it, but the one-size-fits-all is a problem here for me, for sure. I think of people that live, I live right on the, just the part that comes into the cul-de-sac. And there are people that obviously live on the cul-de-sac. If grandma comes to visit, grandma can't park on the cul-de-sac. She's got to go either, if there are a few spots open on the street coming, the part coming into the cul-de-sac, or they've got to park on A Avenue. It seems to me, yeah, it seems like overreach at this point. Maybe that seems extreme, but I do agree that one-size-fits-all doesn't work. And there needs to be some more thought put into this. There's times I put my car under the cul-de-sac because I got to clear the driveway or I'm doing the lawn or something. And I don't want to have to worry about getting a ticket because I parked on the cul-de-sac because it's going to be there for two hours, and then I'm going to put it back. So I'm opposed, and I think there's a lot more thought that needs to go into this instead of just doing a cookie cutter approach. And I hope there will be some compromises. Thank you. And I, I hope there will be some compromises. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, gave her my card earlier. My name is Curtis Eddy. Uh, I'm one of the owners of Precision Automotive at forty-eight fifty Chandler Court. Uh, I want to also start by saying thank you guys for your time and the ability to, uh, kind of rebuttal this as we go through. Um, a little backstory, I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in the city of Marion. Um, I moved away briefly. Uh, and when I changed careers, decided we can move anywhere and decided to move back to our hometown. Um, unrelated to this, I had some issues with the city as well at my home with other enforcement. That was an overreach as well that caused me to actually move out of the city for my personal home. I've decided to keep my business here though. Uh, we've been fortunate enough with the great people of Marion that we've run a pretty successful business over the last eight years, uh, and it continues to grow. Our situation is a little unique other, over other businesses, not necessarily because we have a large staff, uh, because we work on vehicles. So storing vehicles is obviously very tough. Um, where our situation is, is where our building was put originally. There was nothing else on that cul-de-sac. It was the first building that was put there. Um, that's obviously grown since then. Um, and it's been an auto repair shop since the day it was opened, not ours, but it's been an auto repair shop since day one, um, where it's always had cars that we've stored in the, in the cul-de-sac and the lot, that sort of stuff. Now, we've always paid very close attention to keep away from fire hydrants. Um, and I'm not sure if I've met this, the fire chief, the new one or not, but we always work very closely with them as well, um, to not be in their way, to not have things that are combustible, that sort of stuff. And try to do our best to stay out of the plowways as well. Um, that was brought to our attention probably three or four years ago. The plows were having troubles getting through. So we had a conscious effort that we cleared one entire side of the street. Uh, so anytime there was a chance of snow, especially over the weekend, uh, that has now turned into not having any parking on the street during a snow emergency, which is completely understandable. We also clear the street for that as well. In order to do that though, we have to raise vehicles up and then park one underneath and do that on every lift and every bay that we have, um, which takes a lot of time and, and a lot of effort to do that every single time. We have no way where we're at, uh, to add parking. Uh, we had, we do have a yard in our front section there with a tree and, and the whole nine yards that we were open to adding more parking. We actually requested and spoke about it a few years ago, uh, but it was denied because there has to be a certain amount of green space for our lot size. Uh, so adding parking for us is not an option. Um, my fear here is that, um, as this solution is taking away the entire cul-de-sac and all the way up one side of the street, it really cripples a Marion business that's succeeding and striving and wants to continue to stay here and properly open more than one location uh, in this town as we grow. Uh, all three of us are owners. We're all, uh, pretty young, um, and we plan on being here for a long period of time. Uh, but this is pretty business crippling when you run a business like ours. So I just want to kind of bring that up. It's kind of a different dynamic than, you know, house parking, street parking. I understand that. Uh, and probably not as severe and serious, but, uh, it is something that can, can change our lives as business owners that we've chose to open one uh, in the city of Marion and also purchase our building here. Uh, we would not have done that, like they said, as well, business related. That's a huge expense for that kind of property and that changes the dynamic of selling the property, even if we wanted to move, and also change the dynamic of us continuing to grow in the city of Marion. Um, the other thing I wanted to note, as I was, I was reading through this, I do see that these are all labeled as residential streets, um, which they very well might be. Um, but our street has no residents on it at all. Um, it is businesses from front to back uh, and including the cul-de-sac. We do at the end of our cul-de-sac, I believe it's, uh, classified as light manufacturing is what our businesses are, what our lots are. Um, at the end of ours is the big, uh, power distribution plant, like right at the end of our cul-de-sac. Our picture was one that was put up there as well, um, with cars there. Um, they just did an entire renovation project there over the course of probably two or three months. Uh, and when we went over there, talked to them, asked if they need anything moved, anything done, we never once had any complaint from any crew that was working there at all whatsoever. Um, and I always said that we guys can just come in, we'll move whatever you guys need. Try to stay diligent to that with our neighbors as well. Uh, that being said as well, we have a lot of deliveries, uh, that are done by semi truck, the same with the, with different people that are on our cul-de-sac and on our street, and they bring in eighteen-wheel semis almost daily and they're able to do a full U-turn inside that cul-de-sac without any problems with cars parked on both sides and around the entire cul-de-sac. So I mean, that's one of those things that's into, you know, into consideration, like they said, of individuals, case by case basis. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that I noticed that commercial drive that's in our same city block, um, which is right behind us actually, between us and the power plant, um, is a cul-de-sac that's zoned the same as ours and, and belts up to that power plant as well. And their parking solution that is in this tack memo is actually different than ours. And I feel like that we're being a little bit targeted with that because our cul-de-sac, like I said, is wide enough to bring an eighteen-wheel semi down, do a U-turn and come back out of, uh, and then back into the buildings as well. And so the resolution for them is no parking, but only in the cul-de-sac zone and not up one side of the entire street. That will leave us the only option to park all the way up on the end of the street with customer vehicles and load all in front of those condos, which is not going to be good for anybody. So I appreciate the time and consideration and I just think that it needs to be looked at in a closer basis just to see how it affects not only residents, but also business owners, not just auto repair, but other business owners with large staffs, people that need to park as well in order to work in this town. So that's all I got though. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for my card when I'm done reading my notes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Luke Underwood. I live on King's Court, twenty-three ninety King's Court. You guys touched on something, talking about it, I think you said something about people extending parking in their, um, on their properties. I've done that. I, when I first moved to Marion, back to Iowa, um, I had my daughters, two cars there. My wife had a car, I had a car, we had an extra one, and my father now live with us. We have quite a few cars. So we're trying to be courteous to our neighbors, which maybe we could all teach the people around us, be a little more courteous of people and think about what, you know, use a little common sense when it comes to it. We don't need the government to say, you can't do this. We need the people to say, I shouldn't do this. Maybe a little education. But anyway, that's some enforcement stuff and whatnot. But so, part of my problem with the extra parking is the restrictions that you have on what I can do at the sidewalk. So I put a parking pad in out near the edge of my property. My neighbors were good with it, everything. But because I have a two-car garage, it makes it hard for me to get in and out of my, in, uh, my driveway. So I have, now I have to swing way over into the grass, start killing the grass, whatever, because I cannot widen my driveway at the sidewalk. And it looks horrible. Um, I, I'll be the first to tell you, the way it was done, it looks horrible. It looks like somebody just put my wing walls in there and then where they, they thought it would be, which is, I mean, it's kind of where it had to be, but if I could have lined it up a lot better, made it a little wider and made it look a little more natural, I wouldn't be complaining about it. I'd say, yeah, I'll do it. And I did. I mean, I put it in just to get my cars off the street. I think one of the things that I was noticing as you guys were running through the pictures was the number of houses on these cul-de-sacks. I have five and I have an oversized cul-de-sac. Plenty of room. I know there's room for an ambulance to be parked there and a fire truck to get past it turning around. Uh, the ambulance blocking part of the cul-de-sack because I've seen it. I've seen it at night. The other thing is we rarely have anybody parking in our cul-de-sack. Maybe on game days or whatever, people come to visit, but there's still room to get turned around in there. I mean, I've driven big trucks before. I know how it is to, to take care, to do the turnarounds and stuff. I don't like the one-size-fits-all, just like everyone else says. I think it has to be a somewhat case by case. I know there's narrow streets because I've come close to hitting cars with my pickup because they're due on each side of the street. But as far as parking on a cul-de-sack, if we use common sense, we start talking to people and say, hey, if we have an emergency, could be an issue. Go out and visit, talk to the people. Instead of the government saying you can't, say, let the people say we should. It almost seems like you guys with this are pushing the limit of what we can have for cars. And it's dangerously close to saying you'll have nothing and you'll like it. And we should not be going down that road.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Cruiser, nineteen twenty forty-third Street Court. I'm opposed to the parking or the no parking on the cul-de-sacks. Most of the points were good and valid. I'm going to keep me sweet. Uh, I feel one solution, it seems like the main problem is in the garbage pickup and that's what strong this no parking up. Uh, I feel one of the solutions could be a buy shorter trucks for cul-de-sacks. If it's hard to get the big long trucks turned around in them, get a shorter truck. We used to have shorter trucks for plowing our cul-de-sack. They still don't use a tandem axo dump truck to plow the cul-de-sack because of the difficulty of turning the longer trucks around. But now we want to pick up garbage with these longer trucks that were, it's harder to navigate that circle with the longer trucks. Another solution would be to still allow parking and maybe possibly have a, another person follow or ride with them and just pull the garbage cans out for them to come grab them. Or even allow the residents, if there's a vehicle parked out there, to put it right like at the front or accessible, easier for the garbage truck by the vehicle, if there's a vehicle impending the way of the truck to run. I, I did a little quick research and I found no one on the, the tack committee or even city council lives on a cul-de-sack to realize how challenging this can be for us that do choose to live on the cul-de-sack. We paid more money to live on the cul-de-sack in, in the prime, more prime property because of the one-way street, for the quietness, for the safety and stuff of the cul-de-sack. So it's a more sought-after property than going along a straight street. So that's where I'm hoping we can come up with a nice resolution to be acceptable for everybody than to just say, no parking. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Anyone else?
Good evening. Thanks for the forum to be able to, uh, express some of our concerns. My name is Rod Miller. I'm at four-seventy Woodbine Drive. Um, been a resident there for, coming up on nineteen years. And, uh, most of us that live in the, the cul-de-sack have been there for, I think I might be one of the new guys on the, uh, out of the fires, homes on that end. And after discussing it, I was elected to come and hang out with you guys tonight. But one, one of my big questions is on the, uh, the survey and the information that was gathered. How many of the incidents that have caused an issue with emergency, uh, services occurred on a cul-de-sack? Cause I didn't see any, uh, listed there of being a problem. Is, is there any? I don't know if you're supposed to answer in these forums. This is my first one, so, but that's a question I have. I didn't see any incident. There's been any incidents on a cul-de-sack.
We can ask the staff to answer that, but we need to just speak in the microphone though.
I don't have that information with me tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm new to this, so I, if that wasn't the proper way, I apologize. I hadn't heard that question or that brought up, I think is important, uh, to look at. Second thing is the, uh, most everybody who buys a house, just like I was in the situation nineteen years ago where we had three kids, uh, they were, I think, six-four or two or something like that and one on the way. And being an intelligent man, I thought I'd like to stay married. I needed a bigger house, um, to keep my wife happy. And so we, we looked around, we found that one on the end of the cul-de-sack, perfect spot. Um, three bedrooms, big basement, lot of room, big yard, and we could raise a family there on the end of a cul-de-sack and watch ballgames and stuff in the, a safe spot for the kids to run around. And at the time we moved there, there was twenty-two kids, if you went six houses down on each side of us that were under the age of fourteen. Great spot. Lot of teenage drivers developed out of that with a lot of vehicles, with my house being four, um, drivers on top of my wife's car, my own personal car, and then I, I have a work van for my business that's also on that property. It's a slanted slope. I heard one gentleman talk about the slanted slope and I'm like, oh, I didn't even think of that. I have a slanted driveway. If you try to jack up a vehicle and do anything on that, change a tire or whatever, when the kids run it into a fire hydrant, they, uh, you have to go to the flat or your vehicle will fall off its stand and, uh, end up. So you have to go out on the street. There's a myriad of reasons, but the value of the home that I paid was based on the fact I could raise a family in it and have parking available. And I personally don't want to park in my front yard. I mean, we kind of have a nice neighborhood and like to not have it look like someplace down in Mississippi or something. So that, that's the only thoughts I have, um, on top of it. Have never seen a problem. The, the guys, uh, uh, tool around. We have ordinances about parking in snow, I guess. We found that one out a couple of years ago, but the, uh, never knew it because it's never been a problem. Um, garbage guys seem to be picking up my garbage and, uh, and everything seems to be going pretty good. And I think those new trucks came with reversing in case they have to back up and, and, and do a two-point turn. So anyway, that's about all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's, uh, Dave Niemeyer. I live at twenty-three ten Coventry Court. I am opposed to this. We've lived there for twenty-four years. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, there are no cars parked on our court. I know you guys have a trouble with the garbage trucks. There's new garbage trucks. They have to extend out before the guy used to jump out and then dump it like that. So it wasn't, it's still a problem, but not as bad. But not in our court. And I think I agree with, I don't know if you guys want us to repeat, but it should be on a case by case basis. And then with some more facts, because this picture of this truck backing, fire truck backing down the snow shows no cars. So I don't know why that's even up there and why did they have to back down? Would ask you, but you weren't hearing something. So. But I just think that it's something that if there's any other solutions, I'm not sure if you guys ever thought about a, a calendar day? Odd days, you park on the odd side of the street with the, um, numbers of the houses on the even side, even days, even side. I like what the lady said, maybe on garbage days, you know, parking the street. And most people in our, in cul-de-sacks, they have their own little community. We kind of police ourselves, you know? Is there some, a problem? We'll go talk to our neighbors and let them know to move their stuff or it's creating a problem or something like that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Am I right? I'm here. Give it to you in a minute. Um, my name is Cindy Nielsen. I live at forty-two thirty-five Ivy Court. I speak on behalf of all the residents on our cul-de-sack. We've all lived there a very long time and enjoy the, um, amenity of living on a cul-de-sack. We all chose that. Just one thing, um, point I would like to bring up that, um, in the narrow part of our cul-de-sack going into the bulb, if we were to park two Chevy Silverado pickups, they're each eighty-one inches wide, they could park directly across from each other and a ten-foot wide fire truck. And from my research, the average width of a fire truck is eight to ten feet. You could probably, um, attest to that better than I. Um, they would still have over one foot of clearance on each side of the fire truck. And rarely do we have vehicles parked on the cul-de-sack. So I do think we need to take that into consideration. We've had fire trucks down our cul-de-sack twice along with a variety of other emergency vehicles and never had an issue. I think the other thing to take into consideration is that when there are more vehicles on the cul-de-sack, it's usually a holiday. There's usually everyone that's, those vehicles, they're in the home, they're in the yard. They could easily move the vehicles if it was required. We also have flat yards. The fire trucks can drive right across if they needed to. And we always keep both of the fire hydrants cleared. We don't have any parking anywhere near our fire hydrant, both at the end of the cul-de-sack and across the street from the cul-de-sack. I appreciate you allowing us the time to talk about this. I hope you'll take some of these things into consideration as you move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don't have a cart or what comes next?
Well, what, did you want to address the council or? You have to speak in the microphone, please, because, yeah, thank you.
I don't want to make any new comments, so I'm just going to ask what comes next.
So what comes next is that the city council will deliberate and, and vote on whether they accept the staff's recommendation on this. So.
Is that now or is that?
That will be at this meeting. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council before we close the public hearing? Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward. So we will go ahead and close the public comment section. And we'll proceed to the motion.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve resolution number 32276, approving schedule of no parking zones, including cul-de-sacs throughout Marion. This would be area three. Second?
I moved in second to approve resolution 32276, approving the scheduled no parking zones for area three, including cul-de-sacs throughout the city. Now we'll take discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, your honor. So I think based on the comments that we've received this evening, as well as what was the council member mentioned, proposed at Tuesday's work session, that the area three cul-de-sacs, we, that we consider that those have no parking on their designated garbage days and for snow emergencies. Which is then a, a change from what has been proposed. I support that measure as a reasonable interim step before taking what otherwise would be a full-blown implementation as, as proposed by staff. But, but to be clear, one of the things that we do need to do is implement no parking on one side of the streets that lead into the closed end of the, of the cul-de-sacs. So to, my idea is, and Sarah, correct me if I've got this wrong. My idea is, is that we only have the no parking restriction on the leading streets coming into the cul-de-sacs. Leave the cul-de-sacs alone with the exception of garbage days and, and snow emergencies. Taking this interim approach gives us time to collect and review data regarding the frequency and severity of any parking conflicts. And also then to validate whether or not this interim model is effective. Or are the violations significant enough that we need to reconsider a more stringent parking model? So it's a half-step, not a full step. The other thing that I think is important about this is, and I, I heard this several times this, this evening, and I think it's inherent in this interim step. I lived on a cul-de-sac, Mr. McGane, and right next to you. By the way, you were right. Your truck does slide down the hill a little bit. I've seen it. I think it's important to recognize cul-de-sacs are their own little communities. And I've heard several of you comment, well, kind of self-enforcement. Let's be courteous to our neighbors in the cul-de-sac. So that fits with this interim model. So what I would do is I'm prepared to offer a motion to define this interim model. And let's use the time before us to evaluate its effectiveness and if there are other adjustments that are necessary.
Yeah, there. Steve, go ahead. And then we'll go to Gage.
First of all, as this first came, on a citywide basis, we're doing this on a citywide basis. We're looking at the parking throughout the entire city. This is just happens to be the third area that is being affected. To me, it's very easy to vote in favor of this resolution, simply because it does air on the side of safety. So from that aspect, I could say yes, but I also understand it affects a lot of households. There's been a lot of comments made in the emails that were received. We've listened to all of your comments this evening. And I think there is a little more work that we need to do before we would ever consider enacting that in the manner described in the resolution. I do have, however, one change I would make to Councilman Harper's proposal. And that is while I agree that a short-term change could be that, first of all, on all the straightaways, I, I would say no exception. All the straightaway roads entering into the bulb of a cul-de-sac has to have parking only on one side. That is not negotiable. We are doing that on a citywide basis on even narrower streets. So to me, that's not an exception. We're talking only about the bulb of the cul-de-sac. So what he is proposing is that there be no parking on snow days as well as garbage collection days. I would add one more caveat to that, and that is if our garbage truck goes in the cul-de-sac and there is somebody parked in that cul-de-sac on that day, garbage is not picked up at all in that cul-de-sac. Okay, somebody previously mentioned, do your own policing. Cul-de-sac people talk together. You're like a neighborhood. We understand that. But I would go so far as to say, you know, that guy could get out of the truck, take a picture of that car. Anybody has a complaint? Here's the car causing the problem. We're not collecting the garbage on that day. I'm not sure if that's a rational solution. But to me, you guys, everybody in the cul-de-sac says we can police ourselves. That's one way to do it. So I would support Mr. Harper's proposal to that extent. I don't know if everybody would agree with my caveat, but anyway, that's my proposal as well.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Before we even got started with public comment, I was taking just a bunch of notes and thoughts I had on things I wanted to say. And then as people were speaking, those things were matching the things I had already kind of written down. I think throughout this process, our goal's been to deliver higher quality service with the new garbage pickup. But with that, we've asked a lot of residents, we've asked a lot of our residents through that process with the new garbage collection, higher cost, stricter rules with placements of cans. And I, I agree, one of the points I was brought up, I, I really do prefer the idea of, and I'm, I'm looking to the audience for some head nods here, because you guys have said these things too, if you guys agree with it. But the idea of no parking on garbage collection days for your specific cul-de-sac or for snow emergency days. I think that's fair. I think that's a compromise. Going through my notes here. However, with some of those pictures, as you guys pointed out, as my colleagues have pointed out, we already have rules enforcing double parking. That's already against the rules. So I understand there are situations where you're shoveling your driveway, you're double parking. Still, please don't do that. Those that have submitted comments of support for this, this change have all kind of, reading through those emails, have all voiced support for, for the idea of the large city vehicles. They're empathizing with the struggle of the larger garbage trucks getting through. So like I said, I'm okay with no parking on the, on the specific trash days for each of these cul-de-sacs or the snow emergencies. And getting signage to support this because the idea would be if you did no parking, you'd be getting no parking signs either way. So just getting no parking signs that are more specific to no parking on this day because it's the garbage drought. However, because there's just been so, and I imagine everything that we're going to say is going to be a little bit different from each other. I wouldn't necessarily want to make a different motion other than a motion to table this and come back so we can kind of flush it out. I really do appreciate all the people that showed up here tonight to take time to voice their opinions. That's what local government democracy is about. And usually this room is really lonely. So I do appreciate you guys coming all here tonight and giving your opinion.
I would just echo what's already been said down here. I think, I do think tabling it tonight to figure out exactly how to potentially word everything and, and whatnot. And talk to staff to, to make sure we do that correctly would be a good idea too. So. Oh, and the gentleman with the Commercial Street Chandler Court, that, maybe that one get looked at since it is commercial and just make sure that as far as the, the street going in, maybe take a look at that one too, to make sure it's not too wide. Maybe you already have. So just.
Please speak in the.
Yeah, like he was saying, there's no.
We don't have any city garbage trucks at all that come down our cul-de-sac or anything like that. So thank you. Thank you for the consideration on that.
Thank you. Oh yeah, that, that would be the other, my other recommendation.
I'm in support of, I mean, I think the angle we're looking at is Grant's proposal on where we would like to go. So we're talking about tabling it. This isn't like a, a, a way to go do something as soon as y'all leave and then we're going to say like, oh, this is moving forward. I mean, I think we're, we're moving this, I think our direction and consensus is we really are looking at this compromise in between area of probably on garbage days, understanding, whoever said, we don't live on cul-de-sacs. I actually grew up on one. I lived on one for 20 years with four houses. So I, I understand the community that comes around in growing up in a cul-de-sac. Just saw one of them last weekend. So, but I, you know, there is a, we're trying to work with you, I think is the message, but you also have to work with us. So if we can all work together on making this best solution for the neighborhoods and the fact of respect for the, the days that the garbage, understanding the emergency pieces and that this was not done in an attempt to try to, I mean, our biggest responsibility is in the growth of the community, our residents, safety, and also the biggest investment you've made and in your home values. So we're not out here trying to find a way to like go after somebody's home value. That's, that's not the intent. The intent is really in the purest form of making sure that safety is also a piece of this and that the emergency, I, I, I mean, garbage pickup's one thing and I, I understand the frustration and we have to have that. That's a core service. But really the emergency vehicle piece is the one that brought this forward all those years ago. And so we need to look at that. So I think we just, we're just asking how we all work together to find the compromise. It was never an ill intent to go finding a way to make everybody's life more difficult. We all have enough challenges on that on a daily basis. I'm assuming if everybody's life is like the rest of us. So we want to find a way to make it work. Respect the fact that you need that parking, but also the safety that goes along with it. So appreciate you coming forward and I said in four years on council, this is the most correspondence I've received. So in, on any issue. So it's obviously is a very high button, but it's going to continue. All of our neighborhoods are all also affected as this moves forward. So. You've got something?
Yeah, something else?
Yeah, I, I've got one question. One comment that came up a handful of times is we're doing this and one size fits all. I think we recognize that not every cul-de-sac looks the same. Not every cul-de-sac is the same size. So at least while we got everybody here tonight, I'd like to ask Mike to kind of describe the process that they went through to come up with the recommendations. How did you, did you drive every cul-de-sac? If there's, if, if one is 60-foot in diameter and another one is 100-foot in diameter, are they being treated the same? So if you can kind of describe the process that Tac went through to come up with the recommendations that are here tonight.
Yeah, so it goes back to that, the fire engine issue. Every cul-de-sac does vary a little bit, but whether it's a 60 or an 80, that doesn't give us a lot of room irregardless. So when we look at it, unless it's a really big one, but generally they're, they're tend to be the same size. I don't have all the data in front of me on what size each one was. But I can tell you this went through all of us talking about the issues that we were seeing.
Okay, city manager has a comment.
I was just going to add, thank you, mayor. I was just going to add to Mike's comments. I mean, as part of the Tac review, the communication out is, as commentary was coming back in, the staff did take a look at some of those comments and adjusted the recommendation that was presented to council as part of that. So I did want to add on to that as well. The Councilman Miskin had mentioned the suggestion to table. Corporation Council and I were chatting as we're listening to the council. It seems as if there's consensus to explore the parking restriction on the road coming in. So Councilman Harper's recommendation, but allow for parking within the bulb. Is that just seeking clarification that that is the, the consensus of the council at this point?
I don't know if we can say that.
Yeah, I don't know that we can say there's consensus. I, I think, I think what there's consensus on is that we may need to do a little more work on this. That's the, I don't know that there's a clear agreement on, on what the solution is, but that we may need to just look, look at it some more and do some more work on it. And so that was the, Mayor Potem's thought was to table it so that, to, to give us a chance to think about solutions. To think about what, what might be able to, to be done, that, that we can come to a compromise or a solution that everyone's willing to live with. I just wanted to add, oh, I, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt. Was there, was there a thought with that?
Yeah, I was just, what I was going to ask is that, I mean, the, if there's not consensus on that, at least providing some, some level of direction with respect to options that council would like staff to invest the resources in to explore.
That's fair. Yep.
Okay. Your honor, and what comes to mind in this is I, I do agree that tabling this matter for further research is necessary. But we also ought not to push this off for very long. I, you know, the, the lady who lives on Ivy Court, as we were going through this, I was trying to find the respective cul-de-sacs on, on my Google map here. And Ivy Court just strikes me as one that would warrant a little bit of additional scrutiny relative to what would we want to specify for that? Because it is such a short street coming into the, into the cul-de-sac. So I, from my perspective, I think what I stated is the framework of the solution to be subsequently modified by some bit of research that we do here in the near term. So I think that, again, permissible parking in the cul-de-sac itself, except on garbage days and, and snow emergencies. With then defined no parking on the lead-in street, if it's appropriate, seems to be the framework for a, a solution that's kind of an interim, or I should say a compromise position.
We, we can do the vote and then, and then see if there's a consensus around that.
That would be helpful. We've, and, and for council, this started four years ago as a direction from council because of the safety issue. And as staff has talked about it, ultimately this is a legislative decision. This, I believe our, I've been in this profession quite a bit and our council is one of the most receptive to comments and engagement that I've ever worked with. And I appreciate the commentary, appreciate the engagement from the community. And as we've gone through and looked at the different options and Councilman Harper shared this, his, his concept earlier today. And as we talked about it, even just having the clarity on, even just in the bulbs provides our public safety folks advance notice of what to expect or what to anticipate in the event of responding to an emergency situation. That first and foremost is the most important thing for, for our crews. And the, the suggestion about limiting parking on those garbage collection days, our, our desire is to just to, to deliver the, the best customer service and the most efficient service available. And, you know, we're, we're happy to explore those options and continue to turn over those rocks. But certainly that, you know, if there's, if there's consensus on that, that, that certainly helps us narrow our focus in, on the research and providing. on the research and providing clarity to not just our residents, but to council, uh, and to the, the response folks.
Okay, um, I just want to add my, my comments. First of all, I'm, I, I very appreciative of, of the manner in which um, our residents have made their opinions known. Uh, the, the quorum in this meeting could have been much different. And so I'm very proud of, of our city and the people who live here and the manner in which uh, discourse happens. So thank you for, for sharing your comments in a respectful way. Um, your comments are taken very seriously. And I hope that this evening you, you have seen how your city government works. Um, we do have uh, a council who um, is, that is made up of, of people who their only goal is to make Marion the best place to live. Uh, no one up here has a personal agenda. Uh, these are all volunteers who have volunteered their time to uh, see Marion thrive. And our goal as a city, along with our entire team and our city organization is, is to reach higher for our community and to make Marion the best place to raise a family and grow a business. That, that, that was that, uh, we adopted that in 2013 and we've taken it seriously. And I hope you've seen over the years, many of you have lived here for a long time. I hope you've seen um, how the city has been reaching higher and working harder to provide excellent services and to engage residents. I don't know of another city that engages its community and its residents and its decision-making and its, and it's, and its processes on a regular basis in everything that we do, more than Marion. Uh, we, uh, we're very proud of that and I'm very proud um, of the, the job that um, our, our uh, team does in terms of making um, in, informed, well-founded decisions. These decisions aren't, aren't easy to make. Uh, the staff puts a lot of time and a lot of effort into bringing these recommendations to the city council. And together we, we make good decisions for the community. They may not always be perfect for everyone, but they work well for the community. And um, at the end of the day, I, I appreciate everyone giving us the benefit of the doubt um, and not assuming negative intent. No one is trying to make anyone's life difficult. I think that's already been said. Uh, you know, we live in this community and we have to live by these same uh, decisions that are made uh, by, by, by this council. So uh, it's all well-intended. It's all meant with the, with the, with the um, intent of uh, making this city a, a great place to live. And this, this particular decision did emanate from, or this, this project of looking at the parking across the city emanated from an incident uh, where we were really concerned about life and safety. And that's, that's our, one of our biggest jobs as a community is public safety. And consequently, we spend 56% of our budget on public safety. Police and fire and, 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 and building safety. And so we take that seriously. Um, and that should, I, make you all feel good about that and, and then feel comfortable that uh, there are people that are concerned with that. Um, so uh, again, we're all one team and I have always uh, viewed us. There's no us versus them. There's no uh, the city versus other, you know, uh, uh, no one has opposing, opposing interests here. We all have the same interests. And we're all on the same team and we're trying to get to an end goal with, where we are taking care of our city and providing safety and um, and a, and a good quality of life for everyone to enjoy. So um, I appreciate everyone's patience. Uh, it looks like we're going to um, possibly table this this evening and do some more work and maybe give a consensus to the staff on uh, what direction um, they should look at, so. Yes.
Mike, good to that.
Yes. Any, any other comments on, okay.
So we don't have to do anything with the current resolution. I can just.
I think you can move to table it.
Okay.
And then.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't know if the chief still wanted to speak. He was trying to speak earlier. I don't know.
Add chief, okay.
Mayor, what you, what you wrapped up there was, is really, it was just a small detail follow-up, but uh, Steve's question about the detail on PAC and what's considered there. Um, we take into account our largest apparatus to ensure that we can get our equipment into, into position. There were some comments tonight, tonight made about the size of our apparatus that is taken into account on the technical specifications. One thing I wanted to share with the community with our ladder truck, and it is our largest uh, Tower 91, is that we also account for outriggers that extend out from the sides in order to provide stabilization for the platform. So that is also taken into account on the width of the vehicle and it sticks out.
So that would be, that would be wider than eight to 10 feet.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So just wanted to provide some additional context to your specifications for that.
Again, that adds to the, the, the point that we do make decisions based on facts, not our personal opinions, not emotion. Decisions are made based on data and facts and, 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 and reality. And so we have, we do our best to make these decisions in a way that least impacts people's lives uh, or, or, but that, that impacts them in a positive way, I guess. At least, that's the least, uh, you know, uh, obstruct, uh, uh, obtrusive to people's lives. So um, I think we've, we've said enough, but we'll take a motion if you have one.
Yep. Mayor, I had moved a table resolution number three two two seven six approving the schedule of no parking zones, including cul-de-sacs throughout Marion Area Three.
Second. It's been mo, it's moved and seconded to table resolution number three two two seven six. Any discussion? Do you have a comment?
Just looking for clarity on if the focus is to kind of zero in on Councilman Harper's recommendation.
Would that be the direction you'd want staff to go?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we have a consensus.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The matter is tabled. Next item is a public hearing on a permanent encroachment easement for two exhaust fans to extend into city property um, in the north-south alley bounded by Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue and vac, and, and vacated 11th Street and 12th Street. We have, okay, we'll take a minute to allow those who wish to leave the meeting to go do that and then we'll, we'll move on with the public hearing.
One quick question, am I me?
Mayor. Okay.
Will the public be able to address again once you do the evaluation?
There will be another public hearing on the new motion.
Okay, thank you.
On the, yeah, the new proposal, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, so today, yeah, we've got a public hearing for um, Mix who's looking to encroach into the city alley, the 10-foot wide alley. Showing up on the screen is roughly the location where those two exhaust fans would be located. So it is a part of an integrated system to help with um, ventilating out exhaust from expanding the menu to add Korean barbecue um, into that restaurant. It is also integrated with fire suppression. Um, and I can let Chief Fagan um, discuss more on that if you've got questions, but what we're looking at here is the inside of what the proposed unit would look like on the inside with the exhaust fan in the lower left, um, what would be sticking out from the building, roughly about 16 and a half to 18 inches from the face of the wall and 30 inches in diameter. Again, these are the images kind of as you would enter the alley, either from the north um, or from the south. And I'm walking through, showing where they'd be located roughly to scale, um, but not exactly to scale. So the applicant is looking for the two exhaust fans to help expand his um, menu at Mix for Korean barbecue. These would be placed 10 feet above grade. Um, the locations that are proposed do meet with the specifications of the proposed exhaust fans regarding clearances from non-combustible items. Um, the applicant has worked closely with staff, um, planning, fire and building to get to this point. The building owner is also aware and has signed off on the agreement along with the business tenant um, for what's within that content of the agreement. Then I do know there was a question about decibel levels at Tuesday's meeting and I can let Chief Fagan talk to that.
Follow up on a couple of questions that came up from Tuesday. So the, the first one uh, was pertaining to um, actually odor, any odors that may come out of that. So generally, when the fan is running, and I think Steve, you had the question pertaining to the, the fire protection system that's in there, it is a chemical system. However, um, the only odor you would be, you would be smelling on a regular basis would be um, the fantastic food inside Mix. Um, if the fire protection system were to activate, which we hope it never does, uh, if it does, uh, as a part of that system, uh, the electrical system shuts down to the fan and so there would be nothing that would be exhausted through the exhaust fan. It would all be discharged to the actual source of the fire where, where that, uh, where that would be activated. So the next question was pertaining to the, to the noise levels um, and some fan, fantastic research by Deputy Chief um, uh, Jason Hanson. Uh, he was able to identify a range of 56 to 70 decibels um, for the exhaust fan. And just to give a comparison of um, some common things that you can associate with that, that amount of volume would be inside riding a car at about 60 miles an hour um, would be on the high side. And on the low side would be a, a normal conversation or background music. So on the low side there. So just to kind of give you a range of what you would be able to expect walking through the alley.
Okay.
I would like to add just a, a little piece here that um, to, to really uh, thank Kyle Franklin at the Mix for his patience with our staff. Um, as we've really been working closely with him as a partner for, for several years on this project and uh, to really show appreciation to him. I know he was, there you are, Kyle. Um, so just wanted to thank you again for your patience working, working with uh, really a, an extension of your team um, as a part of this project, so.
Will you take public comments or did you have more?
I was just gonna say that staff is recommending um, approval of this request.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yes, and Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to uh, ask the question or reiterate some of the co, other conversation on Tuesday, and that was with the ventilation, the exterior of the ventilation system, if that is something that you would like to see uh, cause it's silver metal looking, if, um, if there's opportunity to have a color that blends into the building, if that, if that's something that you would also like to see, we would make sure that we have that in our approval process. And that is totally up to your decision, if that's something you'd like to include.
We may come back to that with the motion. Um, are we good for to take public comments? Okay, so uh, and this, the public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, no one's coming forward, so we will uh, ask the staff, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any. I have not either.
Thank you. Please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and then proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three two two seven seven approving a permanent encroachment easement agreement for two exhaust fans to extend into city property located at the south half of the north-south alley bounded by Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue and vacated 11th Street and 12th Street, Marion, Iowa. And this was Robin for VLLC. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three two two seven seven, approving permanent encroachment easement agreement for two exhaust fans to extend into the city property in the north-south alley bounded by Seventh and Eighth Avenues and vacated 11th Street and 12th Street. Now, discussion, uh, we can take up uh, uh, the option that uh, uh, Kim brought up, whatever it's on anyone's mind. Go ahead.
Uh, I guess to answer that, I really don't mind if it blends into the building or not. Um, personally, I don't think there, it's that large. Um, but I also just wanted to say, and, and uh, second essentially what Chief Fagan was saying, um, one, thank you to staff for the work that you guys put into this, figure this out, but also thank you to Kyle for the patience, for the investment of time and uh, actual investment into this project. Um, I think it will be a, a big hit. It really is kind of reaching higher in the uptown. Um, there's not gonna be really another business that offers the same service that you're providing by wanting to add Korean barbecue even in the area. So I think it will be um, just a really big hit for, for residents and something that people will be excited about.
Well, I came up with a couple of questions. Um, and maybe these were brought up on Tuesday when I wasn't here, so sorry if they're second uh, or brought up a second time, but as far as the height, so you said 10 foot? Is that the bottom of it is gonna be 10 foot from the ground or?
Correct, the clearance, yep.
So that's pretty high. Um, are they always on or are they only on when Korean barbecue is being made?
So speaking with Gary um, Hanson, our building official, if more tables um, that are running the Korean barbecue, you might see a little more um, action coming out of the exhaust vents versus one or two tables. So it will be dependent upon the number that are running.
But if there's zero people eating Korean barbecue or however that works, I don't know how that works, then they're not on, not blowing anything out or they're just, they are blowing out, there's just nothing happening inside? Just curious if they're always gonna be blowing out.
I, I can't answer that uh, 100% certainty. I'll have to follow up with you on that one, Will. Um, but I, I would anticipate given that, this, this phased implementation and, and uh, I mean, I, I hope they're running all the time because I, I think it's gonna be a big hit, but uh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna be seeing too much.
And my last question, and it kind of pertain to what Kim brought up at the end there. Someday, there hopefully is gonna be art in the alley extended down this way and maybe that alley gets some our artwork or whatnot in there. Are those able to be like, have an artist paint them for them to blend, like if to say the wall of that building got painted in, in some type of artwork, could those be painted?
Yes, they could.
They can be, okay.
Um, the paint would have to be a high heat and there's a portion of the fan that wouldn't be allowed to be painted. Um, there's a lacquered on it that needs to be able to be read by building fire, that sort of thing. Gary did respond. Um, the fans would only be running when those tables are running.
Okay, and then the last question that would kind of pertains to that. In the agreement for these to, or the easement for these to be there, is there anything in there about if that wall were to be painted, that we have the ability to do it? We don't need to get permission? We can't be told no? That type of thing?
We do have language within the agreement that um, refers to the expansion of the art in the alleyway.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Your Honor.
Uh, to uh, Will's um, point about art in the alleyway, I, I thought the uh, utility cabinets that are slapped up on the uh, building already achieved that, so I'm just, yeah. I think we're already there. Anyone else?
Okay, um, go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving resolution number three two two seven seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. I think city manager has a comment.
Just want to get clarity on if the council prefers to have it painted or not.
So personally, if it's gonna add cost to the business owner at this point, I'm, I don't think it's necessary. Uh, and we don't have a plan for the alley.
That's kind of where I was going. Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with that.
Just as long as we can you, use a paint.
In the future.
That it, that it's able to be painted. Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I just want to, again, um, I've said, but this has been a long process for over two years and the business owner came up with a and the business owner came up with a great idea, and the city staff, Fire Department in particular, has been persistent in trying to help him find the solution. And he has been very patient and very persistent, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. This is, again, another example of working together, collaborating, to end up with a workable solution that, in the end, is good for our city, and hopefully it's going to be great for the business. And gonna be, it's gonna be one more thing that makes Marion stand out. So thanks to everyone for sticking with it and your persistence. Thank you to Nicole, not just the Fire Department, the Planning Department, and everyone who's been involved, so thank you. Okay. That brings us to the second public forum, which is a time for people to address council on any topic, whether or not it's on the agenda. Anyone who's here to address council, please step forward. Yes, sir?
I just have a question about the no parking stuff. Are you going to be, I think everybody loved it that you mailed this information to everybody.
Sure.
Now that it's tabled, when you bring it up again, will it be the same process?
I think if there's a new proposal, the same process will be followed. The residents will be notified, and we'll have another public hearing.
Okay. That's great. So, no, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council? Mr. Franklin?
So, I'm Kyle Franklin, and I own Mix, and I just would like to go on the record and say that I do really appreciate all the help with this. This is something we have wanted to do, and I think every step of the way, you guys have been very helpful to me. You know, we've had, kind of gone back and forth, but I think we all wanted to do it the right way. So I think in the long term, and like my long-term goals of, you know, hopefully, you know, expanding, you've kind of, the city of Marion in general has helped me bring this business here, you know, as opposed to the issues we had where we were looking at other locations. So being flexible and allowing us to do what we were doing here has been, you know, the first step, and then now, being flexible and helping us with, you know, kind of with the final step is greatly, greatly appreciated. So I just, I know I've worked with a lot of you, and I just would like to thank all of you collectively, okay?
Thanks for being part of our momentum and the exciting stuff that's happening in uptown. I do remember when you first decided to come to Marion and our prior fire chief, working with you with that, and thank you for your investment and wanting to be part of what we're doing here.
Yeah. I think it's going to be cool, and we are actually already getting started, so it should hopefully, within a couple months, should be up and running, so.
Can't wait to try it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to council comments. Ready? Will?
I'll just say, I think maybe once the Korean barbecue is ready to go, we'll have to go there after council meeting for dinner, and it's all about. It sounds really good.
My favorite.
And fun evening tonight. I'm glad that was a, was a great, have all those comments from folks, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I guess the only thing I'd want to say, just to have, just on the record, is for those that may not have heard, and he doesn't represent this district specifically, but Lynn County Supervisor Ben Rogers is resigning. And I only say that because a lot of us in this room have worked with him on various boards or just on various issues and projects throughout the community, and he's been in service since he was my age, and I've known him since my kids' days, and just become pretty good friends over the years, and he's been a great mental health advocate for this community and has been an ear for when I've had mental health issues and questions and just a good mentor for me. So just congratulations to him for his time of service, and congratulations for him entering this new chapter with his new position, so.
The only thing I have is that Sarah and I will be at the library on Saturday morning, 9:00 a.m. sharp, so council office hours there. So anybody listening in on tonight's broadcast, please meet with us if you have a need. Thank you.
Talk about cul-de-sacs.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So I'll make a plug. Two Saturdays from now is the Marion Winter Market, which is the prequel to the summer farmer's market, which, by the way, if everybody doesn't know by now, is going to be moving and shifting from Toby Park over to Willowood Park. And the other thing I'm very ecstatic about is, two Saturdays from now is March 1st. So that means January and February are gone.
I want to thank everyone for the meeting this evening. I think we've demonstrated how far our city has come in terms of the professionalism in which we handle ourselves and who we are just as a community and as a city. Thank you, everyone. It was a, it was a good meeting. Appreciated all the input and the thoughtfulness that went into making decisions. State of the City is the 11th. For everyone that's watching, we encourage everyone to join us. It's a great opportunity to hear about progress that we have made. We're going to do a 10-year recap, and it's really quite astounding what this community has accomplished and how far we have come in 10 years. And then we'll, of course, talk about where we're going and what to expect in this coming year and in the future. I've said it before, I've never been more confident in the direction of our city, in the leadership that we have, in the team that we have, in the intentions of everyone to do the best for our community. We have a lot of great opportunity, and as I have said since my first day 10 years ago, let's continue to work together, see the best in each other, and give each other the benefit of the doubt, and there's nothing we can't accomplish when we do that. Thank you. Have a great evening. We'll see you next time.